We'll call the meeting of the Ramsey County Commission to order. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to thank everybody for coming this morning. First item up on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes. Any changes to the minutes from our previous? We have motion. We have a second to go ahead and approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Within our packets, we had a couple different sets of bills. Yesterday, I think there was additional bills added. With the law enforcement center billing on there as well as some other last minute things. Anything jump out at anybody?
Move to approve the bills.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, you know, the bills. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
And a motion pending, bill is paid. Next item on the agenda would be the financial reports. Anybody have anything that they'd like to point out? They're out of the ordinary? Kathy, anything that on your end?
I will go through. Take a look at the accounts that need transferring.
What, Miss Ling is general? Have we overspent and? So we're over, over budget more than you? Oh, good.
Well, that's, that's just what we put as expenses, but that's. Not including stuff that's getting out.
Okay.
Yep.
That's where it's got a.
Yeah.
It's negative number on it.
Well, negative, it's, yeah. The pro, yeah.
Right. Two negatives make positives.
Yeah.
Good.
Negative on the program is. You're in the. Green and. The other way is senior in the red.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to explain. You just look at it, you know.
Anybody have anything else on financials that jumped out at them? If not, motion to approve? So move.
Second.
We have motion. We have a second to go ahead and approve the financials as submitted. Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Motion passes. Financials are approved. Treasures checks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the treasures checks as submitted. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Treasures checks are approved. Agenda. We'd like to discuss the Highway Two Porter, the hefty rest area project. Uh, unfinished business. I think if we could. Anybody has anything else to the agenda that they'd like to add?
Move to approve amended agenda.
Motion, motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Alright. Mr. Filson, you're the first one up. Good morning.
Okay, start off, um, we got our tires from, for the motor graders from Service Tire. Uh, they mounted four of them already, so that's included in the cost of the, on the invoice and. Invoices for thirteen thousand, three seventy-one and eighty cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay Service Tire.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second that would go ahead and pay Service Tire thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents for tires.
Uh, just so you know, it's seventy-five dollars to mount them. There's an O-ring that has to go on these wheels. They're like twenty-five dollars or more.
So it's not quite that amount, but more?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. We'll leave the amount off and motion to second to pay the bill from Service Tire. Roll call, please.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the guys picked up some cutting edges, summer cutting edges from Butler. This should be the last of them for the season. And that cost was two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-four cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay Butler for the cutting.
Don't move. Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and pay Butler equipment for cutting edges. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gesner.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Motion carries.
Also, we talked about this earlier, but there's exhaust filter. The burns that refueling on those machines. So when the start weather is due. Uh, that's a cost that we have to pay ourselves. We've done one and it costs around four hundred, four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. So. Looking for a motion to go ahead and do that second start weather machine.
So move.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and, uh. Is it, are we paying Butler?
No.
No, or just having them do it?
Yep.
Okay. For the exhaust filtering on the, uh, greater up at start weather. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, and the state bid on, uh. A plow truck for the chassis and only. Uh, these numbers switched because the. Old numbers were only good from the end of October. I didn't know that, but. The first November, the new bid came in. It's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Three hundred and forty dollars. And I also got a quote from the snow plow equipment folks. Uh, a sander box, a right-hand wing. A front plow and a belly scraper would cost a hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. For a total of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars for a. New. Plow truck. It'd be a twenty-twenty-six built in twenty-twenty-five. One thing I should add, in twenty-twenty-six, the emissions change on everything that's diesel. And they're predicting that these trucks will go up thirty thousand dollars just in diesel part of it. Emissions part of it. But this will be built in twenty-five, so we won't have to add additional cost. And the lead time to get these built is almost eighteen to twenty-four months. So the sooner we get them ordered, uh. Yeah, and everybody's in that, but I mean. I think my theory is that, you know, the twenty-six are going up thirty thousand dollars. So everybody's jumping on it.
So what budget do you have this put in? Is it the twenty-five or the twenty-six budget?
Twenty-five. So we'll end up paying for it before we get it, basically.
Okay.
These snow.
So the initial bid was the one eleven that you had on?
That was the bid from last year. It was only good until the end of Oc- October thirty-first. I didn't know that when I wrote this.
So are you yet? Are you still on budget then?
Yeah, I had three hundred and. Forty thousand. So I didn't know how much a belly scraper was going to be, to be quite honest. So I. Had quite a bit in there for that plow truck. Three hundred and forty, I think it was.
So you're looking for a motion to go ahead and order it?
Order, yes.
And you have, you have on here for the sander, but is that for salt?
Yes, it's a stainless steel box, stainless steel. Plumbing, everything for the salt.
Make sure so, because you have on your sander.
Yep.
I just wanted, sander, seltzer could be two different.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, it's, that's just what it's called, the sander box, yeah.
Salt ready.
Yep, exactly.
Not that we get something in it.
Right. And this one, it'll be a twenty-six, so it'll have provisions for tanks to hang on the side. At this time, we're not getting tanks, but. In the future, they could add them with no problem.
Move to approve ordering a salt truck or the sanding truck.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and, uh, order the tandem plow truck. Sander, right-hand wing, front plow, belly scraper. Two seventy-six, four eighty-two is the new price.
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion on that?
That's for labor installation and everything.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
One thing I should add is, uh, a lot of the counties are adding more warranty and, and this comes with, uh. Three years total end-to-end warranty. And with all the emission stuff, that's why other counties are adding warranty, but that's not in here. So. When it comes time to. Actually receive it, there may be some more costs there, something, whatever we decide to do.
But it comes standard with a three-year warranty?
Correct.
So any additional would be extra.
Yep, exactly.
Alright.
Alright. Also, the state bid, I had a half ton or a pickup in my. Uh, budget also. So the state bid on twenty-twenty-five half ton, I should say extended cap. That was my typo there. Good catch bill. Yeah, the, the prices, all the numbers stay the same. It's an extended cap for forty-three thousand, twenty-three dollars. That's the state bid. And that's for a Sierra fifteen-hundred. And I talked to Jeremy DeVere's. He checked the prices on all the. Uh, pickups that they offer for Dodge, Chevy, GMC. Uh, he came up with the same Sierra fifteen-hundred for like, what would that be? Eight, eight dollars less. Forty-three.
Plus fees.
Yeah, plus any applicable fees, which is like documentation. Whoever gets paid file the documents, that type of stuff. Not, no, no delivery or anything like that.
What's the expected delivery date on this?
He figured the first quarter of twenty-twenty-five. He might be able to pin that down more when he actually orders it.
Is that this year's budget or next year's?
This year. Oh, I mean twenty-five's budget.
Twenty-five's budget.
Yep.
So paying for it when it arrives.
Yep. Yep. And I think I had fifty thousand on that line item. So just so you understand, this is an extended cap with the longer six and a half foot box. So looking for a motion to order that also.
So move.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead. Order the half-ton pickup. Further discussion? Kevin, is this replacing a vehicle or?
Yes, it'd be replacing the one I drive. So it won't be an SUV anymore.
We're not trading that.
No, we'll probably sell it ourselves. That's the plan now. I mean, at the time, we may ask Jeremy what, see what the deal works out, but, you know, we can do that at the time of the sale. Yep. The last time we tried to get quotes, like at this time, then of course we put more miles on that. Our used one, that changes the trade in value. So decided to do it this way.
Ten of miles you have in that vehicle now?
Hundred, hundred, hundred thousand, just under a hundred.
Any other discussion? Uh, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, KLJ submitted an invoice for the South Milwaukee eighty-ninth Avenue project. For the soul shoulder widening. And that invoice was for nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. These are the ones that we turned into the state for reimbursement. So that's been working well.
Nine thousand, four oh seven.
Nine thousand, four oh seven, eighty-five cents. Just looking for a motion to pay KLJ.
So move.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and, uh, pay the KLJ invoice for eighty-ninth Avenue for nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Gesner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Motion passes.
And KLJ also gave us an invoice for the work they did on Ramsey County Three paving project for the inspection. Uh, that invoice is fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, we had a contract with them and they're still just under fifteen thousand left on that contract. So we're still within budget here. So looking for a motion to pay, pay KLJ. What was that amount? Fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, twenty-five cents.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and pay, uh, KLJ for the, this is the, what project?
Ramsey County Three Paving.
Ramsey County Three Paving. Fifty thousand, eight eighteen, twenty-five. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gesner.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, we brought all our motor graders in, put wings on. We had to put glass in some of them. We needed three doors that needed glass and four windshields. And it's not completely done yet, but I'm estimating it's going to be around thirty-five hundred dollars. For everything, for all of them combined. So looking for a motion to go ahead and do that. We're not paying for this yet.
So move. Tag it.
We have motion and a second to replace the glass in the motor graders. Uh, any of this insurance stuff or is it just wear and tear?
I think it's just wear and tear.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, also I got a estimate from Wheeler Lumber. They are the ones that supply pre-salt bridge planks. For a salt shed. Uh, but the size is thirty-two feet long and forty feet wide. With a wall down the center. So it's like twenty-two, twenty-foot bays. That'll hold three hundred tons of project or, uh, product. And last year, we probably used about fourteen ton, but that was. You know, very little snow. We had some ice, but it was kind of weird in here. So it's not a good. Year to go by as far as fourteen tons. And that estimate was just for the lumber. Now, this isn't for any labor to install or anything. Just the lumber is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, the state's got some of these pre-salt ones in their outline. Districts, outline shops. And they seem to last better than the concrete and metal with the metal hoops and tarps on them. We would still have to have, uh, the labor and asphalt floor. That's probably about it. Maybe a cement out front. I had three hundred thousand. On a budget for this, so maybe some concrete slab out front if we still have money left. So I'm looking for a motion to go ahead and order that. We're still within the two hundred dollar bid limit, so we don't have to bid it. Two hundred thousand dollar bid limit. So looking for a motion to go ahead and order that lumber from Wheeler.
So, and this is for the salt, Kevin?
Yep, salt shed.
What are you doing for, uh, product this year?
We're doing the same things last year. The city is letting us share or however you want to put it. We just mix a bunch up, keep track of it on paper and we both pull out the same file. I think we got. Probably forty ton left from last year.
Move to approve ordering the material.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and, uh, order the material for the salt shed. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I think they told me that would be here in early spring. Delivery.
You have an tractor lined up for?
Nope, not yet. This may be even something those guys can do themselves, depending on how busy we are. We don't want to jeopardize it setting around too long. They're not getting done. But that is a possibility. They need things to do also.
And that'll be delivered after the first year?
Yeah, kind of May-June time period.
So the asphalt for this has to be done first, right?
Uh, no, it goes just on the inside. So. Need to put shut up first and then put the asphalt on the inside. There won't be any asphalt on the outside. We do have the, uh, base, the foundation. We hauled in some base material and built it up a little bit. So that's all done. We just need to drill holes for the posts and then. A little concrete in the bottom of the holes to hold the posts and then start fabricating. It's not a real difficult job. It's like a pole shift, basically. The type of construction. Any more questions? I have one more. We met with the DOT in Bismarck. Uh, really nothing new to bring up there. I don't know, maybe Paul, do you guys think you want to add to?
About that?
Maybe I guess the transportation alternatives program grants are out. For applications to at the end of the year. Um, last year we put in for the Ramsey County One Bike Path. And I'm just wondering if you want to do that again? It wasn't toward it last year, but, um, they offered that we can talk to the program manager, eat a debrief and see if we can strengthen that application. On this. The design would be local. A hundred percent local, but the, um, cost share for construction is eighty, eighty, twenty. And we'd want to overlay that and replace the ramps and add the new signing.
So put in for the grant, I'll take the cost.
No.
Yes, so I mean.
I think putting in for the ground would be great. Um. And to have had some citizens concerned about the condition of the bike path. Needs to be rehabbed. A lot of cracks and. Other concerns that they have. Not as smooth as it should be. Do you know when the last time that was done, Paul? Kevin?
It'd been like thirteen, I remember.
Yeah. I was right.
Eleven.
I had looked it up before the application, yeah.
So.
Yeah, it needs maintenance for sure. And, and the crossings aren't up to current standards either.
Okay.
So it'd be. I was a little surprised it didn't get funded actually, but we'll find out why and see if we can fix it.
Well, if we did, if we did receive the grant, then there'd be some engineering work to design it. And of course, but that's.
Sure. And when did they make that announcement on the grounds?
It'd be in the spring.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. I think it's when they came out last year.
Sure. So what will we be designing? Isn't the bike path already there? It's just overlay.
It'd be the overlay and then, uh, you'd have to survey the crossings, put the ramps in at the right things.
AVA ramps.
Um.
Um, track.
And then the striping and stuff like that for the crossings. Sign. That wouldn't be terribly involved, yeah. It's only three miles long.
Right.
It's got several, you know, quite a few paved crossings, but.
Do you like a motion to go ahead and approve the. Process to go through with the grant application or?
A lot, we're not spending any money, but I mean, just to verbally tell them to go ahead.
Well, I mean, I guess it could be a good idea to have a motion saying to go ahead and apply it.
Okay.
Because it would, you know.
Make that motion that we fill out the grant to apply to see if we can get accepted. Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and apply for the grant for the, uh, bike path rehabilitation. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Anything else, Paul?
Um, I guess the other thing we went over at the. Meeting with the DOT was the federally programmed sheet. And we didn't have a federally a project on there, um, for twenty-five. But I think Kevin was talking about paving, um, several roads in twenty-six. Um, we could probably request a project number for that. You had the Crary Road, the Brockett Road and Ramsey County Four from Highway Eight up to North Dakota Seventeen. Um, I would suggest adding the Wood rotten road to that as well.
That's for twenty-six or?
Correct. For twenty-six, but we'd be doing the design in twenty-five. You know, and I would just add the north two point three miles or two point three, four miles of Wood rotten road. That wasn't built up in twenty thirteen, because there's been some rutting. Kevin's had to do quite a bit of patching on that one. It was paved in oh-nine. It's got a lot, mostly in the northbound lane, because there's gravel sources and egg producers south of that. That assume are carrying heavier boats than, than the campers going south.
And I do have money in my budget for the design work in twenty-twenty-five.
Anything else as a result from that DOT meeting in Bismarck?
Uh, the, um, ER projects will be in the spring. Um, we got those pretty close on the design. Um, I think we still have to turn in the cultural report, but all the fieldwork of, of on our end is done, so.
Okay.
Night work. Project sheet.
Yep. Yep, I think that was it.
There's the Hakey Bridge still keeping submitting on.
Yeah, they, they said they wouldn't have another bridge solicitation out until probably the end of twenty-five or, or later. Um, they've got basically all their bridge funds spent for the next two or three years. So they, they've actually had to push them back a year from where they were. So, yeah, they haven't taken any more. Um, applications recently. Um applications recently. That may be something they could put in for a flex one, but I don't think it would be super competitive there.
The issue with that is thirty fifty-three, fifty-two other counties that are doing the same thing, putting in for these same grants. Of course, ours just needs a new deck, basically. We don't control them, because there's so many that are worse. I was gonna say they're gonna take the worst ones first.
Yes.
I think you, but sometimes we've had success, you know, putting in a bridge removal with replacement, but I think you removed all the bad bridges.
Right, right.
You know, that wouldn't be put back in.
So I guess just a thought, if if we wanna try and do something with that bridge, it might be all. I mean, just might be a good way to start thinking.
Would that one be uh something that we could put uh one of those true north beds on? And just, or the abutments need to be replaced as well?
I don't think the abutments have to go too, but they could still, well, this is the long bridge.
That was a cheaper alternative on that one that we did.
Yeah, that had concrete abutments.
Right.
They were in good shape, and this one, I think.
There's wooden.
Yeah, I don't I don't think I would put a steel deck on that.
Yeah.
By the time you put that much into it, you should probably fix it, right? I think I think there was some damage on those too, a little bit.
Yeah, I think the head of buttons have to go, because we get holes in every. I mean, you know, we could do that same type of bridge if the length fit works. Then just have the head walls built separately.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe an option.
Anything else for Kevin and Paul?
So you still, you need a motion to apply for your, what'd you call it, work number or something?
Uh no, I was, I mean, maybe for the, to add the Wood rotten road to the.
On our five-year road plan, the Wood rotten road is on that, so I don't think that adds.
Yeah, and I mean, and I don't know when, maybe a review or five-year road plan.
If the Wood rotten road come up for a few more years, so. And it is good, was checked.
So the motion would be just to modify the five-year plan to include that. The north two point three four miles. Or two point, maybe around it to two point four, just to make sure we cover it all.
So yeah, maybe a motion to change the five-year plan. Make that motion to change that five-year plan to add that two point four miles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table to uh add the uh Wood rotten project to the five-year plan. Two point four miles, was it?
Yeah, give or take.
Give or take.
That added a taper over the two point three four, that's still rounds.
Further discussion?
Um and then funding wise, um in twenty-six, you'll have. Um about two hundred fifty-four thousand federally, you'd be able to borrow one point three million, yeah, three hundred twenty-five thousand a year. So your local share, you'd still be up fifty percent, you'd have a local share for construction of around eight hundred thousand on that. So it's, you'd be able to include all that and still do it under the federally program.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose and sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, unless you have something else for me.
Anybody have anything for Kevin? Kevin, you have a couple retirements coming up?
We do.
Uh longtime employees.
Both of them.
Seven years, I think it was.
Yeah, one's twenty-seven, one's twenty-eight, yep.
Yep. So any farewell? Bon voyage, parties?
I think we'll have one with the highway department, but nothing's planned for.
Okay.
I haven't talked to John yet, I'll, I'll see if he wants to get a picture or whatever.
Sure.
The other one, I'm sure, doesn't care to.
Certainly appreciate everything they've done over the years for the county and the citizens that they've served and uh they've done a great job. Uh so appreciate their work. Thank you.
And I will talk to them and see if they want something more too.
Okay. Next up on the agenda would be uh Paul Becker Fair Board. Elizabeth, are you joining him in that capacity on the fair board? Uh Andrew? Okay.
First of all, I'd like to give you a little update on construction. We started construction approximately a year ago. Uh well, not the actual physical part, some of the dirt work got started at that time. They have the roof completed on it and have started the the outside siding. I was out there on. Tuesday and they have about half of the west wall done, so I'm thinking by the end of the week they would have the entire west wall done and. Things are looking good. He was planning for November first, having the roof complete. I think he missed it by two days, so I. I think that's good. That was real critical for him to get that done before we got cold and snow. That type of stuff when you're up on top of the roof, so that's looking good. On the. Handouts that I sent out there, basically I have a profit and loss for. Projected profit and loss for the next three years. And then also kind of an updated estimate on costs that we have for the. The building. I'll go through maybe the costs first. The building bid was a little over three million dollars, three point zero six nine. But we've had, of course, anytime you start a project, you have extras. We had some extra dirt work that we had to do. Gonna be put fans in. The the city requiring us to have. Extra bathrooms in there. We now have eight women's bathroom or toilets and. Four men's toilets and four urinals in there to satisfy the city. Initially, we didn't have bleachers in there. We have bleachers for two hundred thousand dollars, panels for in the building. I've got a fifty thousand dollar audio and video. I don't know if we're gonna be at that, but we're gonna. Do something in there. So I put fifty in there and other contingencies of a hundred and fifty. So it brings us up to about three point five eight. Total cost. But currently, we paid to date one point eight three one. So we've got left to pay one point seven five oh. We've been visiting with the neighborhood banks initially, before we started the project. We thought we'd be looking at a million dollar note. It's gone up. I think we're looking at a one point six is what we've been visiting with banks at. At a million, everybody was thinking things were great. At one point six, they may need some help. Or if you look at our our projections on the next page, the first years we show shortfalls in our income. Just it takes a while to get everything up. They were wondering if we could have the county cosign or guarantee. I don't know which the proper way would be. The. When we look at the bottom of the the income and expense there, after the net income, I've got a loan payment. Visiting with the banks are probably looking at something in the twenty-year range at three percent. And that was what a payment would be at three percent. If it's more than that, it goes up about five thousand dollars for each half a percent. So if it was four percent, it would be a hundred and seventeen. I would like to thank the county for the initial million dollars to get things started. If we hadn't had that, we wouldn't be. Wouldn't be building at all, but it's looking good. We've we've had various inquiries as far as renting it. Some of the different things that are coming up, so. You got any questions for me?
Questions for Paul? Paul, do you uh think that the completion date are still on the same timeline?
Looks like we're on, he thought that he got that roof, that was the biggest thing. Our completion date is actually the end of May and twenty-five. We actually have our fair scheduled for the end of June, so we do have a little bit of timeframe in there. And you know, we've got some projects coming. We've. Looks like maybe in April, we've got some things going on that can be done before construction is complete. So we do have things lined up already.
Commissioners, any questions? Thoughts? Movements? Looking forward to uh, you know, to drive by every once in a while and see that can. Building going up and it's a, it's an impressive building. Can't wait till it's finished. Be pretty darn neat. So you don't know for sure if banks are requiring a. A cosigner or a guarantee from the county?
They don't, I don't know that they for sure are. I visited with all the banks on Tuesday again. And they said they would feel more comfortable with one. So I don't know if it's a requirement or not, but.
I got a question on the the one point eight that we paid out. So how I get a million of that was came from us? Where the rest was grants and.
The rest has been grants and money that we've donations from the community. And we're still working on grants. We aren't gonna stop and we're still working on donations, so we assume that. There's gonna be more of that, but that kind of is where we're at.
Looking at it from a year ago, that's really impressive.
Yeah, we've we've did a lot of work and we've been fortunate that people have been generous. See the value, I guess.
Is there any grants that are hanging out there that? You know?
There. Bremer changed their whole grant procedure about four or five months ago. And we're expecting to do a Bremer grant, probably for something like the bleachers.
Right.
When when we initially did a Bremer grant, we were denied. At that point, they said that they weren't giving grants for building buildings anymore. Fine, if that's the way.
But if they were to give something to put in the building.
But they maybe would do something like that, so when they get their grant process opened up again. We'll apply that. I know Alvin and the Steiner's been doing all of our grants and Alvin couldn't make it here today. I know there's, she's currently working on some, that's the bigger one, right?
And the things that are included, you know, in that one point eight, that's already been paid, people have. There's donations set up for three to five years.
Yeah, some people have done pledge, some have paid the whole works at one time.
Yeah, cuz I, that's why I asked that number, because I'm pretty sure when you guys had said the number before was higher than that, that's why I asked.
Well, I think there is.
Included, yeah. And that makes sense, like Lee said, I mean, and now it makes sense, otherwise I'm like, well, the numbers aren't coming out.
Yeah.
Lee, are you on that fair board? Um do you have anything that you?
Well, I think, you know. Guaranteeing a loan or cosigning a loan, whichever is the proper way to say it, you know, I. Like anything else, you know, that first year or two is is gonna be tough, but I think, you know, we're not asking the taxpayers to pay it. We're just basically asking to make sure that. We get the financing upfront. So I think there's. Every time we have a meeting, somebody has another idea.
Well.
What's the use, you know, potential?
Potential uses.
Potential uses and all that, you know. It's hard to, at least in my mind, hard to. Do projections when you're really changing the whole way you're doing business. I mean, when you're going from the building we have to the one that we have under construction. And again, it's like, it's not like they didn't know that there was gonna be a loan, um you know, like Paul mentioned, it was. We were thinking it wasn't, maybe was a little short sighted not to think of the. Problems you're running into with construction. I know part of that dirt work. Um they just had to get the water, go the other way over the hill instead, right through the building. And as far as the. Changes in the timeline, you know, that. Screwed everybody up and even after you got the building up, a little bit of rain, you know, it's all clay on the inside of the building. So they still had to wait for that to dry out, but I guess the important thing to to note is that they're not asking for money from the county. It's just the. Help with the paperwork at the bank.
Yes.
But if they aren't short sighted, it will be a cost to the county.
Well, yeah.
Well, I think it'd be a cost to the county regardless of whether or not we guarantee a loan or not. You know, eventually if that were to fail, it would be to come back to the county anyway, I would think. As a political subdivision of the county.
Yeah, I think in our bylaws, we do have an uh addendum to our bylaws. That state that the building would go back to the county.
Right.
Or anything that we've got would go back to the county, so it actually is. Really a county building built through the fair board.
I I have complete confidence in in the direction that this thing is going. And um would be happy to to sign on if that's what the commission would like us to do. But we should have that in the form of a motion. Somebody's willing to make it.
I'll make a motion that we cosign the loan.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have motion, we have second, we have discussion, further discussion.
So what, how much money are we cosigning for is the question I have. I don't think we know that at the moment. Until you guys figure that out. I don't have a problem cosigning, but.
I think it would be the one point six is what you cosign.
Yeah.
But yeah, you know.
You you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah. Cuz I don't wanna say, yeah, we're gonna cosign and all of a sudden a number comes back and it's.
Oh.
Yeah, two million dollars.
I always draw my motion and I'll make a motion that the county cosign loan for one point six million.
And Commissioner Wilhelm, are you okay with that down the second?
Yes, I will second your amended motion.
Additional discussion?
I guess I'm okay with that, but it worries me some.
Well, he, and I think that, and I've had this discussion with Paul before and other members of the fair board. I I think that the fair foundation or the fair board has the ability to go out and ask voters. For an additional mill levy instead of just the one that we currently had, and I think that would maybe be moved them to do. In the future to, you know, not only pay for this facility, but to further expand the operations at the fair. At fair uh grounds out there. Because I don't know if this is gonna be, or should be the end of uh expansion out there. Um there's a lot of different things that the fair has possibilities of doing out there.
When you look at this, it's phase one.
Yeah, you know, pha- phase one, whatever, and um, you know, continue moving forward that. Faces out there and um, you know, I think there's a lot of additional things that could potentially be done down the road. Whether it be five years, ten years, what have you, but. But, you know, additional funds or different additional revenue sources are always good. So guarantee that this thing moves forward in a proper way and a timely manner. So they can get it up and operational as soon as possible would be great. It's going to be a great addition to our community and I looking forward to it. So further discussion?
And I might add, I am very much appreciative of what the fair board did. And it's been something needed for quite a while. So I still have concerns on the financial side.
Yep. And there's, I think, always those concerns moving forward to something this big. Sticking our neck out a little bit, but looking forward to the completion of it. And then seeing the thing up and operational will be a fantastic condition to our community. Other comments, discussion? Hearing none, let's do real call now.
Hulk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you much.
So thank you, appreciate you coming in, continuing your, uh, good work on that facility. Uh, Sheriff Lang, you're the next contestant. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. First off, uh, we got most of the Motorola radios in for squad cars and going through everything. We come up that we need one, to order one more radio, and that's going to go in the track vehicle. We've used that in emergency situations like during the winter to go get stranded people off the highways. And it serves as a good backup for us. If we got a radio that goes down, typically don't use that machine during the summer. We could pull that radio out and put it in the squad car until we get the other one back from being fixed. I got an estimate, it's, uh, for one radio, it's twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars and ten cents. And I'm looking for approval to order one radio, and that should cover us with all the radios that we would need to go into the siring, uh, phase when they finally kick that off. Everything will be digital then. So we should be completely up to date.
Just for your department?
Just for my department. There, there's a lot of fire department search and rescues and stuff that.
Yeah.
And if we can get it ordered, we can probably still beat the deadline to get in on the rebate.
When is that rebate?
March, March twenty five.
Now. We'll have to get the other responding agencies to maybe get a bid in prior to that too. Because I think we committed, I think, uh, quarter million dollars out of that ERPA funds. Two forty, what are the funds for, um, responding agencies within the Ramsey County? So. Questions for Sheriff Lang on the purchase of the Motorola radio?
And I do have, um, looking at my budget, I do have enough money in my radio budget to cover the radio out of this year's budget.
Okay, so you said there's a, you get a rebate if you qualify or get it in at that, what's that? How much is that?
Fifteen hundred dollars a radio.
And they just give you that back?
Yeah, it comes back to the county.
Okay.
So we're going to do an all in one application, so all the radios, the iPods so far. We'll submit them as, as one, and then they'll just write us one check back.
And make sure that gets in because.
Yeah.
It's a few. I make the motion that grant is what you presented to us to order.
Purchase radio?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Motion and second, go ahead and approve a purchase of the Motorola radio for the sheriff's department, twelve, six, twenty nine, ten. Is that was the bid price? Is that correct?
It's twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty nine, ten.
Yep. Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Sheriff?
Uh, the other thing I had on there was a bite suit for canine.
Yep.
We originally were looking at bite suits and it was over twenty five hundred dollars. We contacted the individual that we got the dogs from in Canada, and they get us a bite suit for just a little over eighteen hundred dollars. So, um, I don't know if you want to go ahead and put that in a motion, let me purchase that, but it's under the twenty five hundred. First, we didn't think it was going to be, so that's why I put it on you.
Yeah. We could go ahead and have a motion to approve that, I think that'd be fine.
So moved.
We have motion and second to go ahead and approve that, purchase of a bite suit for the canine training. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
So if anybody's interested in volunteering wearing the suit, we're taking volunteers. Other than that, uh, two new squad cars are up and hit the road. They got stickers on it, so, so they're in service. Good. And other than that, uh, I've been working with Kevin, we should have some signage up on County Road Four. Uh, I think the poster could probably go in this fall hopefully, and then the signs spring. So, and, and we found some places where our speed zones don't reduce in the right way. Oh, I haven't talked to Kevin about it, but we'll get that addressed and do that right. So they're writing speeding tickets when you're coming off of a sixty mile an hour and it says twenty five or something like that, so. But that, you got anything for me?
Uh, jails, prisoners, if we could, I don't know if you've sent the word out, uh, increase the numbers to neighboring colonies, if they have any, um, we have capacity. You know, we're sitting at, I don't know, a little over fifty. I didn't look at it this morning, but you know, we have the capability of a hundred, three, a hundred and five, uh, person capacity. We have the staff, we have the availability. We're, you're on the news all the time about DOCR and, um, not accepting any prisoners after the, I think it's the twelfth. So it'll be next week, they're going to be reducing or.
Prioritizing.
Prioritizing inmate, uh, acceptability. So if we could get some outside entities to contract some additional prisoners, I think that'd help the bottom line at our facility, so.
Yeah, we've had some conversations with, uh, agencies outside.
Good. Now, I appreciate that. Oh, anything else for the sheriff today? Want to thank you and your deputies for everything they do, keeping our community safe.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Fifty one today. So sitting a little, little less than half capacity at the jail. And, uh, you know, all these news agencies that say that everybody's full, we're, uh, sitting over here at, hey, look at us. You know, uh, please send your prisoners to Ramsey County. Uh, next item on the agenda would be the, uh, hefty or the, should we put the hefty rest area since Sheriff is here and Kevin's here? So Blaine and I had a meeting last week with DOT, uh, Kevin, uh, joined us for that. And, uh, down at the State Highway Department. And it looks like they're willing to make adjustments, um, with, uh, what, based on the recommendations that were sent over to DOT, that we had put together and South Minnewalk and Township put together, uh, extending turn lanes and readjusting some turn lanes out at that hefty, uh, stretch of highway out at hefty from Ramsey County or city limit sign all the way out to have to rest area in and out and making that corridor a little safer. That's going to be probably a two, if not a three year project, uh, correct? Um, and so what they were looking at is, or what we were asking for is, is there something we can do in the interim to make that corridor safer? One of the things that we all thought of was reducing the speed. And reducing the speed out there from, uh, seventy to sixty miles an hour would make a huge difference, I think. Yeah, not only the visibility of oncoming traffic, um, but safety concerns. And if you were happen to get in an accident, if you're going ten miles an hour slower, you could certainly improve the, um, the impact, um, and the damages occurred on something like that. Although, um, but, or reaction times, improve reaction times, all that thing that goes along with reducing speeds. And so what the process was, was to draft a letter requesting the reduction of speed and send that up to chain of ladder. I talked to Sheriff Lang yesterday about it, and we need to, um, just sign a letter from the commission and send that up to the, uh, the captain or the head of the Double Lake Highway Patrol Office. And that gets forwarded out to his boss up at the state level and, uh, and so on and so forth.
And the speed wasn't all the way out to the rest area, it was pretty much right after the bean plant, I believe.
I think a mile, mile beyond that. So there'd be an additional mile that, you know, there'd be a, an area out there. So I think it was eighty nine.
Right, because they even talked about, when we talked about the corridor as far as, as far as it went, they actually wanted to extend it about a mile.
Yeah.
So that was there.
Fair deal.
Yep.
So not only does reducing the speed help the safety, uh, factors of visibility or reduction of speed give you more response time, um, with a slower vehicle, but it also, uh, would reduce the overall cost of the, uh, project. The turn lanes then become a hundred feet shorter, going from sixty feet to seventy or sixty to seventy miles an hour. So it'd be a savings in, in cost in the overall project moving forward as well. So you wouldn't need it quite as long of a.
And one of the biggest reasons they suggested that because of safety money, grants have been cut quite a bit. What they had in their budget. Is that what the, I can't remember her name, was talking, it would definitely help to move the project on because of costs.
Great. So we drafted a, uh, a preliminary letter and, uh, Sheriff Lang responded that it, it looked good. We can dress it up a little bit and, you know, show some appreciation for their cooperation. Blah, 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 yada, yada, yada kind of thing. Um, if that's something, a direction that the commission would like to go for, we'd probably approve like that in a form of a motion. Go ahead and have the, uh, chairman draft that, sign it, send it off to the appropriate, uh, local and state officials. And then we could certainly CC all people that would have been CC'd on the previous correspondence. I think all our local legislators were included in that, those emails, uh, going forward as well as South Minewalk and Township and some other entities that were involved in those correspondence.
I think it makes sense, so, I mean, it's a step in the right direction, right? Because this is going to be farther down the road than we anticipated to start, so, um, takes some getting used to by driving public, the locals anyway, but I, you know.
But moving forward, that's what their, the plan is anyways, to lower.
Right.
They figured that's.
Sooner the better.
Of course, to start safety would be smart to do it now.
Yep.
I would make that motion to drop the speed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to go ahead and, uh, draft a letter, uh, to DOT, uh, State Highway Patrol and, uh, asking for a reduction of speed in the Highway Two corridor leading out to the hefty rest area from seventy to sixty miles an hour. Is there any additional discussion? Yes.
Would it be at the best interest for the commission, also, of township, building, county?
Yep.
Because that would be one of the biggest concerns.
Absolutely.
Suggest that if it doesn't work for the first time, we try it again. We'll be able to suggest considering it down in the end.
Yeah, we certainly could add some additional information out there pertaining to the various accidents out there. So it's, it's been over a dozen years or it'll be a dozen years since that was first brought up as a concern. So December of twenty twelve is when that, um, first real bad physicality out at Vining Oil occurred and, uh, started the process of asking for improvements in that corridor. So we could certainly include all that information, that data within that letter and include the township, yeah, in that, on that discussion.
I would just, I would just assume include it all at once.
Right.
So we don't have to come back to the.
So we don't have to come back for the process, okay. We'll, we'll get those statistics, uh, put together and send that out. I think a lot of that statistics were, uh, included a couple of years ago. And we could add some of the most recent, um, accident data out there within that. So, okay. Any other items that should be addressed within that, that letter?
I guess there might be a couple of concerns with that. If it's a patrol, people actually get down to sixty miles an hour, that's a good idea. You know, fatalities are reduced quite a bit with speed reductions, but your crash frequency might go up because of people going seventy still.
Right.
Half the people going sixty have a speed differential, which can actually increase your crash frequency.
So we, we'd have to do some, some education enforcement out there, uh, whether it be digital signs or other forms of communication out there, making sure that people are well informed. And, uh, so we don't have, like Paul mentioned, that we, it would have, uh, people going seventy still in a sixty mile an hour. Could create, uh, additional hazards out there. So we'll make sure that that gets properly adjusted and, uh, addressed when that time comes. Good point.
Are there any considerations about why we need, because the maintenance is not wide enough?
Right. Hey. Yep.
Sounds the initial thing probably.
Right.
What comes first, the design or the business alongside?
Yep.
And they're not working together when it's being designed for that type of business. All the businesses along there with someone.
Yep.
That, that was the biggest reason why they wanted to add another mile onto the project.
Oh.
For additional.
For additional safety concerns and. Well, the, I think within the engineering of the, of the project, um, the, this initial thing is what we can do immediately. Do the sixty miles an hour, and then as we engineer the thing, um, and go through that process of engineering turn lanes, medians and different things like that, making sure that that all gets addressed with the project. And, uh, moving forward and so they can get that properly engineered and then, um, designed. They then have to go through the public comment period and the public input and, uh, and then funding of the entire project. And so that's why it's taken so darn long on this project to get completed. Because they came to us with the project and we, uh, didn't like it, didn't approve of it. Uh, the J-turn concept was, um, and so we were lucky that we were able to get that next. And we feel, feel that, you know, initially, the first step would be reducing speeds out there, slowing people down, making sure that they're abiding by that lower speed limit. And then work towards a, an engineering of the, of the crossings and the turn lanes and different things like that. And, and certainly the medians are going to have to play a part in that, so. So. We'll get that letter drafted and see if we can't slow people down through there. So further discussion on the motion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll uh work with all the entities, get that letter drafted. And uh either have something for final approval at our next meeting or we'll uh get, get that taken care of. Thank you. Uh, and other unfinished business was the Ramsey County Comprehensive Plan. Uh, Water Comprehensive Plan. I know Daniel stopped into the uh Water Board meeting on Tuesday and got their, what they're looking for from the county. So Daniel, I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, uh Daniel Howe with Ramsey County State's Attorney's Office. I'm an Assistant State's Attorney. Uh, pursuant to the motion of the commission uh at the last meeting, I did attend the Ramsey County Water Boards uh meeting this past Tuesday. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about water issues generally as it relates to the lake, uh as their own ones are. And a lot of the same issues that have been discussed here in this room and in homes and rooms across the county uh were had again. Uh, and there obviously are no good solutions on the table that everybody can agree on. Uh, the, the major I guess decision or request that came from the uh Water Board was that they would like for some sort of involvement from a commission member to help lend more legitimacy to the Water Board. Uh, the, the feeling is that the Water Board doesn't really get as much uh respect or legitimacy when they walk into a room that uh doesn't really have to respect a Water Board's decisions or opinions. Uh, I think that's mostly when dealing with outside uh organizations and agencies going to other county commissions and other water boards that are part of the Devil's Lake Basin, but there's no real the issue is that there's no real unity in the approach to how to fix this situation. Um, and so they were looking to see if maybe a commission member would be willing to go with uh a, a Water Board member to these meetings in other counties to see if we can't get everybody moving in the same direction. Uh, as has been the case, Benson County and Rallett County wants different styles of management uh than Towner County and Ramsey County Nelson County might because their concerns as far as the lake goes are different than ours is the water sits in Ramsey County and passes through Rallett and Benson. And so the, their concerns are different than what our concerns are on a regular basis, even though we're all part of the same joint water district. Uh, that was, that was the most clear request. There are obviously all sorts of ideas and plans and recommendations on stabilization of the lake and what could go into those what could go into those decisions and plans, how complicated they are. Uh, they admitted, as was stated here at the last meeting, that that was a very initial plan that was really more just to get the conversation going and to help uh encourage people to sit up and pay attention to what the Water Board is having to deal with and grapple with in order to even get their jobs accomplished and what that board is created for. But the main request was that there be, not that they're saying that the commission is not supportive of what the Water Board does on a regular basis, but to have the commission lend its legitimacy and conversations with the other stakeholders in the basin essentially. Uh, that's, that's my best recap of what their request was. There's obviously a much longer conversation about water issues generally, but uh, based on what you had asked me to do at the last meeting, I think that's, that's what they were looking for in uh this whole conversation.
No, I'll volunteer to do it.
That's what they want. I have no problem with that.
And they didn't, eh, they didn't have any specific, you know, once a month, however many times a month, obviously that's a non-professional board who has to work with their own schedules and if, if you're willing to communicate with them and coordinate when you can be there and when you can help advocate with them and for them for the Ramsey County water issues generally. I, I think they would be very appreciative of that. Otherwise, uh, I don't think they'll have much of a plan, or it didn't seem like they had much of a plan to come back with or come back to the commission with just as far as support and approval of, I think with Commissioner Gesner's input and um help in getting the other counties who are involved in this situation to at least have a conversation and discuss what would be best for everybody. Uh, I, I think once they can have those conversations and get everybody moving in the same direction, there would be more of a possibility of having a an actionable master plan for Ramsey County Water District. But that's, that's all they had for us at this time, uh unless I'm missing something, Commissioner Frith.
Representative Frilic, uh you were, attended that Water Board meeting on Tuesday. Anything that you would like to add or?
That certainly was part of the conversation and I think is part of what the plan would be. Uh, as in all things, it's hard to get five separate counties to agree on what's best and what sort of legislation would best benefit everybody in the situation. And I think that's part of what they're asking the commission to help them and move people in the right direction. Uh, nobody wants to be involved in a lawsuit with the state. Uh, and so legislation would be the preferred first step in trying to get a, a plan and a fix for the situation that everybody's been grappling with for several decades now. Uh, and so yes, legislation and just having everybody agree on what should go into it is one of the first major hurdles that they're asking for the commission's help with.
So the Devil's Lake Joint Board meets on uh Wednesday, uh the thirteenth, um, nine o'clock. So if uh Representative Gesner wants to, Commissioner Gesner wants to be there.
Sure you get that right. Holy crap. No, I definitely don't need a motion. I will not be able to make that meeting. I have a meeting in Bismarck that day. So, um, but I will get in touch with, uh Brian sent me an email, Brian Volk. So.
He sent you an email?
So I'll get ahold of him.
Hey, anything that uh, cause he was gonna address a, or prepare a letter uh to the commission, cause he couldn't be here today.
Yeah, and I, I just got it this morning.
Okay.
Been able to read it. So I'll, we'll just have to I'll get ahold of him and the chairman over there and work something out, but I have a previous engagement on next Wednesday.
All right. Anything else on the comprehensive water management plan that we'd like to address today?
I don't have anything further to add on the plan.
Great. I look forward to Commissioner Gesner joining the conversation. Let's see, where are we at here on the agenda? Pardon me? Oh, yeah. Electrical update. Darren Hall with Berxstrom Electric, Roger Gunderson, uh, please come join us. So going through uh some of this stuff, we did have any electrical engineer come through, Jason Huntsey. And Jason said that he would uh be more than happy to join us via conference call if we'd like them. Uh, he did send a, over a contract. Um, he came through and did a walkthrough with Commissioner Volk and uh Darren and Roger, about a week ago, I think it was. And then he had sent over a, an engineering agreement that basically says that uh this agreement would design, plan, uh specification preparations for a project bid, construction contract administration, uh shop drawing review, contractor pay request review and approval, uh, construction administration, including final site inspection and assistance with warranty issues uh for project upgrades, electrical distribution system at the Ramsey County Courthouse. So his engineering estimate, uh, or his engineering uh contract would be a lump sum of seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars. If we wanna go ahead with that route, he also did uh kind of a, a basic assessment of what our needs would be. And uh that's addressed in the Ramsey County Courthouse Electrical Service Upgrade. And I think he breaks that out down probably on the low end of some costs. He indicated two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Comments, questions on any of those? Do we wanna go ahead with uh Mr. Huntsey's uh agreement for the seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars?
Well, that's seventeen, that's seventeen thousand dollars included in that bid.
But that, that's in this contract here. This.
So that's on top of that bid?
Well, that, that's separate. So his bid is.
I see it now.
Yep. Darren, did you have anything you'd like to add based on conversations, walkthrough? Cause I think there was something that Square D was, Square D is a different company contractor um that deals with parts of this whole system that we have within the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They're, they're a supplier. Uh, they, they build the panel boards and supply it to contractors. Uh, the, they initially proposed uh to do a temporary fix, which uh was a real, real expensive Band-Aid um to what you guys have down there. Uh, when Jason was here, I, we, we were flowing, floating ideas back and forth, just to temporarily get you guys something safe until the, the current project. Uh, the, the concern is with that eight hundred amp breaker that's not functioning correctly. It won't, it doesn't shut off. Uh, that breaker controls all the panels on every board. So if you had a problem with that breaker, uh, you would have except for one panel upon second, I think is for the uh for the county health. But everything else would be done. That's on that bus duct. That's controlled by that breaker. Uh, there was uh, so Jason and I talked about it that we thought if, you know, in an emergency or or a temporary fix, we could put an external disconnect, a fuse disconnect next to that switch here down there. Um, just to get you by until that whole thing is replaced along with the uh circuiting in the floors up to the existing panels. Which I think we're really ought to go with, you know, not good news with the eight hundred amp breaker. We had been talking so far, and I guess it's been fine until it tried to run. But now that we've gone with the problem, waiting and hoping it doesn't give it any trouble. I don't think this is the wrong to go. You know, we can do that and I'm not going to target it over until it's a whole thing going on. Typically a conservative timeline, you know, if you guys go forward with this bid, you're still probably looking to me two years before you have something in place. Because uh once everything's bid and, and contracts are accepted, you're still probably looking at it. Six to eight, maybe twelve weeks to get the switch here and some here. And that's then that, so, you know, so, so you're, you're realistically two years out. Uh, the, you know, and um, well, if you wait and it go down uh us doing an emergency, getting our hands on one of those breakers or like disconnects, I'm sorry. Those are usually about three or four weeks uh to get. And, and if we had to get in an emergency, then you're pretty much double the cost of the breaker or just some infuses and stuff like that. So uh, being a little cautious and doing it preemptively would probably be your best bet, your safest bet.
Well, I would, I would totally agree with that because I mean, we have a potential here to lose a lot of stuff.
Yep.
If we do that, if we don't, I mean, if we just roll the dice and hope, hope the numbers come in our favor, um.
Now that we've ripped open the uh, the seal on Pandora's box and threw the box away.
Yeah. I, yeah, I totally agree. So did you have an estimate on?
It's a rough number.
Yeah, that's.
I, I, I think we can, you know, it's right, it's gonna be in that general way.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not gonna hold it. I'm just, just a number to, to work with in my head. I, I think that's.
And, and we would do, we do the work after hours to win the, the inconvenience to the courthouse.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's what I mean. You take that twelve thousand and, and you.
I don't think we have a choice.
Pick, pick any wrong time and it's gonna be disastrous.
Well, the worst part is to say the whole entire breaker may not log, maybe you lose one face of that breaker. And wrecking things on the corridors. That's where you're really running for the risk. Then you, then you're next one actually going up.
Yeah. I make a motion, we go with the recommendation that the what was it? Add a
Add a disconnect.
A, a fuse disconnect to the system to alleviate any major problems.
I accept that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go ahead with the uh going forward with a fuse disconnect. Further discussion on that? Is that motion fairly clear, Darren?
Yeah, uh, what I'll do is I will uh put together an estimate. Um, and I'll submit it to the current engineers review that are working this generator here. They will review it, make sure it all looks right, and then they will uh bring it to you guys.
Okay. So will this disconnect still be operating on the generator?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. What, what we'll do is we'll um, we'll, we'll connect directly into the bus duct to feed the new disconnect and then. And then we'll pull that from the breaker down there. And we'll put lugs on the bus bar that comes down and connects directly to that existing breaker. And so we'll try and do it as, you know, I think as possible.
Yep.
So we have a motion in a second on the floor for a. Is it the fuse disconnect, is that the proper terms, okay? Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, do we want to go ahead with the engineering contract, the electrical engineering contract with? Mr. Huntsey? Do we want to get him on the phone, ask him any questions?
I had a question for you, Darren.
Sure.
When we did this generator thing, were they the ones that did all the engineering on that?
The.
Bringing the power into the building?
Yeah.
It, it, different, different.
Yeah, it's different.
Yep.
Uh, Jason Huntsey is.
You don't, you don't track it, but.
Oh, back.
Talking this, I'm talking about behind that. So all the stuff that was done down there, how was that all engineered by the individual?
Through Fairburg Engineering and, and Martin Mechanical.
The only reason I ask is because I was there last week and going through the whole thing. I, I just. The last couple of days is thinking about how we just moved on. With the disaster we have downstairs right now. I'm not tracking how we brought twelve hundred amp service in, but we have a eight hundred amp breaker. You know what I'm saying?
Well, four hundred amps goes to an existing transfer switch, which, and that, so that.
What I'm saying is why did that throw up a red flag? What? And again, you're not the one that engineered it.
Yeah.
But why that didn't throw up a red flag of running three pipes in there? You know what I'm saying? Because right now, we got to get, we had to put it together to make the generator work. We walked through it downstairs, but running another four hundred amp, plugging up the box outside, you know, that was a lot of extra cost. If, if the, I don't understand the whole process of why they didn't take that panel off to see what the hell was going on. We're trying to jump the whole building versus half of it, because basically the, the way it was set up, it was only half of it.
The, the existing, so. When Jason was here, yeah, we went through it and finally figured out how everything was working. So existing, the old generator ran a small four hundred amp transfer switch down there, which they figured was for critical power. Which has to be on a separate transfer switch. So then they just added a second transfer switch. And that transfer switch, I believe, has eight hundred amps coming in, I guess. So combined with the four hundred and eight hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred amps. But. The, there's one section of switch gear down there that was run off the four hundred amp and the other.
Because it was for field defense. Yeah, here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just the basement and. Because my frustration is when they gave us a big deal. I feel they pieced it together to make our switch gear work instead of coming back to us and saying. We should move on to a different process, because now we spent a lot of money that we probably could have avoided.
Correct.
And not, it's not on you. I'm just saying that I think the. Before we opened up the Pandora box, we should have probably have had that question. You know, I'm not the electrical engineer who was a guy who did this, but it was like they were just, yep, here's your generator, we're going to make this work. Instead of doing the correct thing, and now here we are to, to do the correct thing, we're probably having to go extra forty thousand dollars in costs, forty thousand.
Yeah, I, I, so.
It's hindsight now.
Right, I mean, they, they, I don't know if they, without shutting things off, if they would have found those breakers were bad. And they would have created the problem with, or.
Well, I'm not even looking at the breakers, I'm looking at how the unit split.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, I don't know, I wasn't here when they walked through, or I wouldn't put my two sets in, trust me. I don't like messing with that old stuff at all, I would rather have all the stuff we're installing, honestly.
Yeah, it's a mess right now.
Yeah.
Typically engineers try to upsell, so I'm, I'm surprised they didn't.
Pardon the interruption, I, just to build on Commissioner Volk's question, and I guess maybe to get to the point he's trying to ask. Is, is what was proposed and carried out within the standard of care of the profession here in North Dakota? And you don't have to give me an opinion if you're uncomfortable saying that, I, I, that's, that's what I'm concerned is. Did they fall well short of what you would consider to be the professional standard?
I, yeah, and I don't know how to answer that correctly, the, it, it depends on what they were contracted.
Sure.
Asked to do. If they were asked to upgrade the generator. That's what they said, you know, I, I don't know if the official was, they're looking at the whole system, I don't know what that conversation was. So I really shouldn't, I, I can't do the comment on that.
I appreciate that.
What, what they did give you is a good generator and transfer switch, it's, it's a good system. The build off would, you know.
Yeah, from there. To there, outside. Great.
Yep.
But once it comes from there to here, that's a good.
But I guess, looking at it from that standpoint. I couldn't tell you what we asked. I think it was just to replace the generator.
I think.
Or to the building, I don't think we asked.
I think assess what else we have.
Well. Well, like, conversations with Blaine, you know, I've said it before, you know, like. In my house, I've got. Really old wiring, and I don't think anything of it when I have an electrician come in and, you know. Remodel a bathroom and update the wiring there, I don't think of. Don't think of the rest of the house because I don't have money to do the rest of the house, and, you know, I, I think. Part of this is probably learning. For the next commission is that when you do a project like this, maybe you need to go.
Well, beyond.
Ask for one step further than what you're actually doing so we can not have this problem again, I mean.
Well, it put him in a hard spot.
Well, exactly, well, it puts us all, I mean. You know, you're looking at just a rough estimate of two hundred and eighty-five thousand. To fix what we didn't know about, and maybe if we would have asked the right question at the right time, it would leave the whole thing, so I guess. Now that the election's over, I guess we'll just have to learn and move on. Alrighty.
I think you, you answered. Darren. It's just frustrating.
Is that what you're looking at here, Candy?
You know, and I, I agree with the, the switch, to put the switch in to get us to where we need to be until. Get something decided.
That, that's a no brainer.
Choice.
No.
I was honestly confused when I was down there. Big transfer switch, and we were feeding big old gear, I'm like, well. That, I, I assumed that whole section was all connected, it's right like a bus. And I'm like, why are we feeding the entire gear, plus we have our transfer switch here? Isn't it going to go back and forth, you know, the bolt here transfer, and then one's going to see it's got good power and transfer back and run off the big one? And then I, then I, you know, Jason said, no, that's got to be done there. Um, yeah, that will transfer back, it'll see it's got good power, and that, the big one will take it up, but if, if in the event the big one hangs and doesn't transfer, the little one is still taking care of the critical piece, your critical stuff. So that, that's kind of the explanation that, that came about.
If the air handlers weren't on the big one, we would be able to get by with the four hundred.
Right.
If the air handlers were on the eight hundred, so there's no way to get that one. Yeah. Right?
That's correct, that is correct.
So we, we approved the purchase of the, the fuse?
Yes, the question was with Jason if we want to move on to address the rest of the issue we have in the courthouse.
And I have reviewed that contract, it, it looks like a good contract, it's fairly standard, as long as what he is, what is stated is, as far as the services you're looking for him to complete, everything else looks in order. The only thing that I did see that might be an issue is how many signatures the commission will need, whether it's the chairman of the board and the auditor, or just the chairman's signature. That would just need to be added, otherwise I, I would recommend if the commission wants to enter the contract, that the, that the contract as written is a good one.
Yeah, this, and. Talking with Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. The seventeen thousand dollars takes care of all the putting it in the paper and all that good stuff. That's basically, he's doing the legwork for us, is the way I understood.
I think there, there may be some additional costs with, if, if he has to make additional trips over here.
Oh, right, yeah, he has that in there, down by a percentage of mine.
Yeah. So. You, you know, I, I think it'd be very difficult to just ignore the issue. And it goes away, because I don't think it's.
It's not going to.
Um, I think Jason, I was very impressed with him, his knowledge, his expertise, his professionalism. And it sounds like he's somebody that works, has worked in the past with, with engineering and the crew here, so.
I make a motion except.
The contract.
The contract.
Okay.
I second that.
We have motion in a second to go ahead and. Move forward with per engineering, professional consulting engineering with agreement. Further discussion on that motion? Do we want the amount of that emotion for that contract in here? An engineering agreement? Seventeen two. Okay.
Yeah, it'd be seventeen two with the adjustment if he has to come out.
Right.
With the contract, move and take that to bid and.
Yep.
Yes.
So. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. So we'll get that signed and let Jason know and hand you on to look forward to hearing from you on the, the part as soon as possible.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Roger. Anything else? Visitors? Karen, did you have anything? You've been patiently waiting, so appreciate you.
Just here to listen, Karen Hausman, she's just very, on a different topic, I wanted to publicly acknowledge and compliment Candy, the auditor for organizing the election, it went very smoothly, I think Kevin can attest to that too, she got us extra help, she was always there when we had questions and. I don't know, what'd we have, twenty, just a twenty-five hundred plus come through the memorial building, I believe. It was nonstop from eight till the end with just barely a little slowdown, so it went very well, and I appreciate all that she put into that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and certainly want to thank Candy, her staff, Leslie, Michelle, any of the other additional election workers that made the election move smoothly as, as it did. It was a big undertaking and not quite record crowds, but. Certainly close to it, so appreciate Candy and. The crew that made that happen, so thank you Karen for pointing that out, thank you for your hard work and working as an election official as well. Thank you. Any other? Comments? Anybody have anything for portfolios that they'd like to announce? I think one quick thing, that Operation Green Light, we're currently in the midst of that. Want to thank Roger and Bryce for lighting up the building, if you haven't driven by a building that during the dark. It looks spectacular, we need to get an updated picture on our social media sites. And certainly want to thank their efforts in Operation Green Light for veterans. And Veterans Day coming up on Monday. County offices will be closed, and if you haven't been to a Veterans Day program in recent years, I invite you to come at eleven o'clock on the eleventh. And take that in, it's always a very honorable and moving tribute that we. Thank our veterans for everything they've done and given and sacrificed for the freedoms that we enjoy, so. We have a veteran that currently serves as commissioner, Commissioner Volk, thank you for everything that you have done over the years as a veteran and continue to do. Appreciate you and your family for the sacrifices that you have kind of given to our community. Commissioner Gesner, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yep, Planning and zoning commission is moving forward with. What we're working on, we need public input. There's a link to the survey, it's a short survey, it takes less than five minutes to fill out, I don't, I don't even know if it takes hardly that at all. I believe Michelle was working on it to get it on the homepage, if you scroll up to the bottom of the Ramsey County site, I think she was going to try and get a link to the survey there, and if, it's, I think it's somewhere else, I think, but.
Yeah, I think it's already out there, and certainly encourage community members to go ahead and fill that out, I think it was a good meeting last week on the kickoff for that comprehensive plan, so appreciate Commissioner Wilhoney and Commissioner Gesner's involvement in that and all the other planning committee members.
But it's. Pretty important that we get. You know, public input on this because it's going to be the basis for. A lot of other things, I mean. I didn't realize if you don't have a comprehensive plan that any ordinances you have don't really mean much because there's no comprehensive plan to back them, so. It's a pretty important document for the future of the county and. I welcome all the input when it's appropriate, but if you come after, we've put a lot of money and time and work into this thing, and then you have an opinion that's probably not going to sit well. So here's an opportunity to, to get in on the basement floor and, and make a difference, so.
Certainly, very impressed with the, the progress of it. And the commitment that Steve Zimmer and Donna By with Houston Engineering have had. Certainly is, has a step forward than what we've had before in the past, the community meeting was well attended. Well, could have been greater, but it was, at least it wasn't the three commissioners sitting around with the two engineers, so. So appreciate that, so.
Yeah, they've been really good to work with, and you seem really knowledgeable.
Yep.
Nobody asked a question that they didn't have a resource for, so.
Right.
That's it. It's important. Yes, that's all I can say, I'm not going to beg anybody to show up or do it, so.
And we shouldn't have to.
No, exactly.
So appreciate that. Anything else from the commission? If not, hearing none, motion adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, you're the kid. There you go, the electric man. Three lines of people and everybody will behave themselves. Other than some people, I would already pass.
Yeah, we, you know, I mean, everyone that came in with, you know, political attire, you know, they, they were just asked to remove the hat or stick up their coats or, you know, nobody. Nobody was, you know, it's a crumple and.
Maybe it hurt your great.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, um, you know.